Check, check. All right. Give me just a moment. I know I just galvanized some. Welcome, everybody, to the City Council Workshop for the Women's Club. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Ms. Sykes, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Jernigan.
Present.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Young.
Here.
Councilmember Carter.
Present.
Mayor Walker.
Here.
City Manager Rosenthal.
Here.
City Attorney Martin.
Here.
Chief Butler.
Very good. Ladies and gentlemen, the Lake City Council has opened its public meeting since 1968. The city code has prohibited any person from making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, or becoming boisterous while addressing the city council. Yelling or making audible comments from the audience constitutes boisterous conduct. Such conduct will not be tolerated. There is only one approved manner of addressing the city council, and that is to be recognized and then speak from the podium. As a reminder, persons are not to openly carry a handgun or carry a concealed weapon or firearm while the governing body is meeting. Failure to abide by the rules of decorum will result in removal from the meeting. Welcome, everybody. We are here at our workshop for the Women's Club, and I've asked Mr. Rosenthal to kick us off prior to public comments just to give us a summation of the issue at hand. And I will turn it over to you, Ms. Rosenthal.
Thank you, Mayor. Our staff has looked at this situation and had several contractors go out and look at it along with our building official. And the cost that we've been getting on repairing this structure has been over $200,000. We had a third person at the request of Councilmember Young to look at it today. And that third contractor wanted $50,000 to shore the building up before he would even go and look at the roof. So that's where we are today with a repair cost of at least $200,000.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. The whole purpose of this special meeting is for us to receive public input, to allow you guys a voice at what we should do moving forward with the Women's Club, review the predicament as Mr. Rosenthal briefly did just now, and then discuss directive on how we might move forward. So I will now begin public comment. And we only have one person signed up, so if you're interested in speaking, there are more than, there's more than one person here in the room this afternoon. We will begin with Ms. Debbie Griffin. If you are interested in speaking, please fill out a comment card in the back of the room.
Do I need to, like, introduce and address and all that kind of stuff?
You're welcome to. Sure. Please.
Debbie Griffin, resident, born and raised Lake City, Florida. 359 East Duval Street is my address. The, I actually have some questions based on what you said, Ms. Rosenthal. The, I had not seen the NOVA estimate, or, excuse me, evaluation. And there's no price on that? There's no cost written on this particular handout that's over there? So is there a cost associated with the NOVA?
Well, if you like, we can make them all available to you. One was a, NOVA was a structural survey. What they did is they surveyed the structure to see if it was structurally sound. It was found that it wasn't structurally sound. And they gave us a number, a general number. The other one is pretty much straightforward, but we can make all these proposals available to you, if you like.
Yeah, I was just, I was just curious, because there's a huge difference between, you know, $50,000, $80,000, $90,000, and $500,000.
Well, the $50,000 was for them to shore it up, to go and look at the roof. They didn't want to go and look until they shored it up, for their sake.
And that's NOVA?
That was our last person, that was NOVA, yes.
Okay. So they were, so they evaluated it in 2024, and then again more recently? Because this is, NOVA is June 2024, just for clarity.
Hold on a second. Procurement is here. Let me let her address that.
So our insurance is through FMIT. And FMIT are the ones that had NOVA go out there and do the structural assessment of the building. So there was no, they didn't provide us with no cost. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Ma'am, did I answer your question? Yes.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. So I really was here mostly to give him my support for maintaining the Women's Club. It's been there, we talked about it before, so many years. So many clubs use it, so many people rent it out. I have, as I mentioned before at a meeting, someone who's a structural engineer in Tallahassee, Mark Rapaski, who is more familiar with working with these really old structures like this one is. And I think we need to talk to somebody that knows the construction from back then, not just say from a today's view, you know, what it looks like. Because those places, those houses were built way better than our houses today, I'm sorry. So, so my proposal would be, and I'm not saying I'm a lone warrior here, because there's a lot of people in support of it that may not be here tonight, but is to create a capital campaign. So we would need anywhere from minimum six to 10 people that we would put on committees that would do things like, obviously, chair, vice chair, treasurer, major gifts chair, public phase chair, communications chair, grant coordinator, donor stewardship chair, and volunteer coordinator, because it takes a lot to get a capital campaign going. And then have different donor levels. For example, Legacy Circle would be at a $50,000 mark. If pie in the sky, we got 12 people at 50 grand to companies to donate, or there was a lot of old money in Lake City. We got people who really do believe from the heart, but just don't want to stand in front of a microphone or make a statement for the newspaper. But if you could get a number of people to do 50, and then take it all the way down, pillars of the past, 25 to 50,000, cornerstone, 10 to 25, and so on. Even supporters up to $1,000. So I think a capital campaign would be something worth looking at before we just rip it down. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Griffin. We do have somebody else who has signed up for public comment, and that is Mr. Josh Sparks.
How are y'all doing tonight? So I personally went over to the building, myself, and looked at it. I think the estimates that we're hearing are probably pretty accurate, if not more than that, as far as the cost to repair the structure. I went up, looked and kind of stuck my head up in the attic, looked around at the trust system that's on the pictures here. And it's, to me, it's a little bit, probably a little bit more dire than somebody might think, because it's, you got a lot of the roof structure that started to collapse. And so it's kind of at a point now to where, like, one more thing goes, the whole roof system could essentially come down. So you got the main trust system that has pretty much collapsed. So a proposal that we had was, it's, the costs are significant enough to do that it may be worth, and we had talked about possibly even doing this, if the city was willing to basically turn the building over to us, we would be willing to go in and do the restoration costs and keep the building intact like it is now, restore it, fix it, and then, of course, it would still be accessible to the public. So that's one way of, I guess, saving the building without, you know, the city isn't willing to initially come up with the money to do that. We would basically do that on our end, because just initially looking at it, the first time I went out there, I was like, this is at least probably $300,000 minimum to repair it. So that was one of the proposals we had put together. It was like, if the city was like, hey, we just want someone to take it, but we want to keep the building intact, so, you know, to keep the public happy, then we would be willing to do something like that, so. And, of course, we would just put it, you know, that we were just gonna keep the building intact, restore it. And, of course, the details we'd have to get to later on, but just one of the proposals, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yep. Are you willing to answer a question, Mr. Sparks?
Yes.
Because we do have some other public comment.
Yeah, okay.
Let's go through the rest of our public comment, and then whenever we get to council discussion, we'll ask them questions. Ms. Marilyn Hamm.
I've been a member of the Women's Club for a lot of years. And for the last 20, 30 years, 40 years, I have been the rental agent. And every dime we got, we put back into the building. Somebody asked in the paper why the city owns the building. During World War II, the city took over the, the building because the Women's Club could not have USO dances on private property. So they put it to the city, and the city said, we'll give you a 100-year lease for a dollar a year for you to take over the building. So that's what the Women's Club did. I was a child at the time, so I wasn't there. But that's why the city owns the building, because of the USO dances during World War II. We had a naval air station here in the county, and we had to entertain the troops. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marilyn. Ms. Linda Nettles.
Sorry I arrived late a little bit. Well, I've been a member of Columbia County, Lake City, all my life, and I love it. And I'm sure a lot of you can say the same thing. But even if you maybe haven't lived here very long, you can still say you love the same thing. It makes me sad to think about they would tear it down.
I'm sorry, Ms. Nettles, would you speak into the microphone?
I would be glad to. Thank you. I'm sorry. I know there's, comes a time when we need to do something like that, tear something down. I'm not a dummy, I realize that. But I would just, I'm here to say, please don't tear it down. If there's any way we can save it, I would appreciate it. And I speak for several people I've talked to since I've learned of this meeting tonight. And we all have the same, maybe a couple of them got to be here. But I think it just adds to our history, it adds to our heritage. There's so many other things that I'm sure some of you can think of as well. It's always been a safe, wonderful thing, a place for, my goodness, I'm so old now, but years ago, when I was like in my twenties, when I was 15 or whatever, they had so many things there. And I mean, they had dance lessons for kids, they had wedding receptions, they had family reunions, and I can go on and on. And way back then, I can remember, they never really charged very much to use the building, which might have been a bad mistake, because they make, could have accumulated a little money for repairs. But this is just something I've heard lots of different people say over the years, because I was in the garden club, I was in Junior Women's Club, I was very active at Parkview, and we've used it for things, Parkview Baptist. And I just want to say, please, let's consider not tearing it down and redoing it. And I really think we might be surprised, the people that might would like to donate to part of that. You know, if someone gave $50 or $5,000 or 50, whatever they could give, this might could help. Anyway, I just, that's my, my thing I was gonna say. They never charged very much to use it. They can surely plan to do that. Of course, that would have to be after it was repaired, I realize that. But thank you for letting me speak. I just wanted to let you know that I don't want it torn down. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Linda. That concludes our list of public comment. Sir, if you're interested, just come on up to the podium and then fill that out after.
I'm just curious what Lassie Black, this meeting would go, go for if Ms. Lassie Black was here. I think we'd all be leaving the room knowing it was going to be saved. Y'all don't know Lassie Black, huh? Well, look her up before you make up your mind.
Thank you, sir. If you don't mind, just turn that into the chief whenever you got it. All right, that concludes public comment. So now we'll begin discussion, and Mr. Sparks, if you'll come back up so that... Ms. Young, do you remember your question? Sorry.
How you doing?
Good. How are you?
After pondering, I guess the question is, and this is not directly to you, I'm gonna ask your question. Do we want to save the building, or do we want to save the building and have a Women's Club there? Because what I'm hearing is, our main focus is saving the building because of the historic meaning, the meaning of the building, the historic view and all. Is that our sole purpose, or do we want the building to stand and for, remain a Women's Club? Does that make sense, the question? Do y'all understand the question?
Who would run it?
Who's running it now?
We're not. The lease says Women's Club.
Okay. Now, my question for you, I hear that you have an interest in the building, right?
Yes.
And you feel you could save the building?
Correct.
So what would you do with the building?
We would leave it open as an option for, like, if the Women's Club wanted to rent it on certain nights. It would basically become an event center for where people could rent it on like a...
So it would be your, your business, your building, your...
Correct. Yeah, that's how, to me, that's the only way that it really makes sense to save it, just because of the cost to, to remodel it and keep it intact. And then, of course, the ongoing cost of maintaining the building. So it would be set up to where, basically, you could rent it like a wedding venue or something like that.
Okay, so...
Or a, or a woman, the Women's Club, when they do their meetings. Because right now, no one's, no one's there, because it's shut down, it's closed down right now.
But you want it free of charge?
Well, that's what I'm proposing, just based on the extensive cost of renovating it. I think the, it's getting to the, to me, it gets to the point where the cost to renovate it pretty much matches what the building value is. So it's like, if, if, if it was purchased for X amount of dollars and you had to renovate it, then it doesn't become sensible to do it. And so the, if someone's willing to, what the community wants is the building to remain intact for historic value. Someone that's willing to put up the money to do that, it's, it's a win-win for both, essentially, is the way we see it.
Thank you, Mr. Sparks. Does anybody have any other questions for Mr. Sparks before?
No, I don't necessarily have a question for him so much as just to, to clarify. I know, to me, and I've, I've been fairly vocal, I've made some videos on Facebook, and they quoted me in the paper. It doesn't, USO, or, is it USO?
Yes.
USO dances in the 40s is a reasonable reason to have done what we did then. But to me, I don't necessarily know that it makes a whole lot of sense for the city to own and run a building like this. And that's kind of where we're getting at here, is like, all of a sudden, massive price tag on a building that, in a lot of places, this building would be owned and run by a club or some kind of civic organization, or nonprofit, or something. So the idea of an investor coming in and saying, well, we'll make the repairs if you give us the building, if they're willing to keep the structure intact, not raise the structure, and especially if they're interested in, effectively, the building is used as a rental space now. There's receptions, there's weddings, there's, like I've said multiple times, I've eaten lunch there every Tuesday for 16 years in the Kiwanis Club. I believe the Altrusa Club uses it, obviously, the Women's and Gardens Club use it. I think maybe the only difference in a situation like that would be that, right now, I don't think that the Women and Gardens Club are running it as like a profit-driven thing, where they're, they're actively looking for people to rent it and use it and spend money. I imagine a Mr. Sparks or somebody like that would be actively advertising it as an event space, please rent it from us. They would probably charge, you know, whatever the going rate is. So those sort of things would be the subtle difference. But, you know, for Kiwanis Club, for instance, I'm not 100% sure. But I believe we pay, like, something in the realm of $500 a month is what we rent it for, for just our Tuesday lunches. So the other groups that do, I would imagine, would also be paying some sort of a thing. Anyway, I've said before, it's not necessarily the sort of building that I think we should own, but I certainly don't want to see it destroyed. And at this point, we've talked about it enough, and I don't think anyone here is for demolishing the building. But I don't, I don't hate the idea of someone who's willing to take it over, if they're willing to also agree to not raise the structure.
Right.
And especially if they're willing to agree to effectively allow the structure to function as it does now. So I like that as an option.
I have a question. So as it stands right now, who pays the electric, the water, and the insurance on it? Does the city?
We paid it to last month.
Oh, okay.
Since we've been out of the building, we've paid the light bill every month.
Okay. Just to clarify for the people at home, the, the Women's Club has paid.
Is that for, because I know that there are two Women's Clubs. One on Martin Luther King Street. That is, is it under the same umbrella? Mr. Rosenthal, do the city own that as well, and...
Yes, Councilwoman, the city owns that one too. We're looking at doing some air conditioning repairs for that one right now.
If I could respond, Mr. Mayor, to that, too. I didn't actually know that we owned that building, the one you just referred to, until all of this started happening. And I, and I have the same opinion of that building. I feel like if that club would like to take that building, I'd be happy to, to give it to them, sell it to them, work some sort of deal out. But again, it just doesn't, I don't know why the city owns, I don't know why the city still owns these buildings. I'm not confused about why it happened, but why, at some point, I feel like we probably own quite a few things that we don't necessarily need that would be a better benefit to someone who'd actually put it to use, so.
My thoughts around the, the building itself, like you said, to preserve it, but, and from the same standpoint, but from the city's standpoint, I thought that it could be a revenue generator for the city, which is why I was for repairs in the same vein that Mr. Sparks is. However, he brings up a, a pretty important point to me, which is why we kind of, you know, even without all the information of the, the third quote, kind of forced this special meeting, was time is of the essence, especially whenever you're talking about old buildings and the issues at hand. And we're going to move slower in general, just because of the bureaucracy. I mean, it's government, I come from a small business, I don't like moving slow. I'm a fast mover, because, you know, that's how you keep your business afloat. But a lot of people don't understand that the amount of RFP time, and the time we have to turn things over to Ms. Brenda and her crew, can really slow a project down like this. So is it, I come to the question, because it, like Mr. Sparks says, this would be a great place, very much like Gainesville's chapel at Lake Alice for small weddings, for events such as that, where they generate a lot of revenue for the University of Florida. I come to the question, how feasible is that legally, Mr. Martin? The proposition that Mr. Sparks is proposing, because this is the first time I've thought about that.
There are a, a couple of avenues you can go. I would say, and in looking at the, the city code in preparation for the meeting, one thing that the city does not have is a surplus property ordinance that addresses real property. Our surplus property ordinance addresses only tangible, personal property. So my suggestion would be, no matter which way we go, before we actually go down a path, that we adopt an ordinance that would guide this process and future processes as it relates to divesting the city of, of real property. Number one. Number two, in doing that, you could, you could draft it in a way that would just simply allow any private party to, to submit proposals based on an invitation or a request for proposals from the city on how they would use a certain property or compensate the city for it. In this case, I don't know that this is necessarily a, a price-sensitive conversation we're having where you would want to take the highest and best bidder for a piece of property, per se. Because there are certain other, it sounds like, you know, community interests involved in maintaining the structure, its historic value, maintaining it as a resource for the community. So there would be strings attached to this, and you would want to take a holistic approach to any proposals you would get. You know, again, because of the unique nature of the structure and its unique history, something if the council wanted to do it and build into the process, you know, when properties meet certain criteria that would be in the ordinance and kind of map to this structure's history, you may want to give an opportunity to the entity that conveyed the property to the city for free. The opportunity to submit a superior proposal, to re-acquire title to the property, and then they could then determine, you know, what path they wanted to take with it as it related to its restoration, or granting out to a third party to, to restore and, and manage, or that sort of thing. Take the city completely out of that picture as it would relate to this and other uniquely situated properties. So you've got a lot of leeway on this, I, I think, to, to map out an ordinance that would guide you, you know, in various different ways. And, you know, we can kind of map that out. And then, once you got it mapped out, then the ordinance itself would dictate the path forward. I don't know if that's very clear or not. I'm kind of thinking out loud here as we're talking about it, so.
I would...
Lawyer, lawyer thoughts.
So I would, I would say probably the biggest challenge right now is time. So that's probably the biggest thing I see when I went up in it. I was, I took a look at the structure, and I was like, this thing needs to be fixed like now, before it collapses. So that was my take as a builder, looking at it. I was like, I'm not even feeling really safe being up in the building right now. So just something to think about, anyway.
The unfortunate part of that is the ordinance process is going to take at least a month to get that, that structured. Was there any reverter in the, in the conveyance?
There, there was not a reverter in the conveyance. And the other thing we have to keep in mind here is, the lease is a legal document that we do have to address. I mean, the, the city, if it conveyed the property without addressing the lease, would convey the property subject to the lease. And, and so we do have to address the lease as part of this. Even as a 99-year lease with a $1 a year rental payment, we still have to address the lease.
My, my other thought, which has been brought up here tonight too, was, was a capital campaign. I had, I actually had to, and Ms. Griffin brought this up. I've had two companies call me with pretty significant contributable numbers, if that's even a word, words, or numbers that, that they could put towards something like that for something like naming rights, or something along those lines that would go to solving a large chunk of that. Again, time is an issue. Mr. Carter, I'm just thinking out loud, too.
When I waved a minute ago, I didn't know you were gonna start saying something, and I forgot what I was gonna say.
Sorry about that. Ms. Harris.
Ask the ladies that stood up, would that suffice you all if the city is not over it? As long as, your thing is just preserving the building and the history, right? So it does not really matter whether the city owns it or whether, all right.
Yes, Ms. Griffin. It's a workshop. We're working, we're working through it together as a community, city council, and members of the community.
So one of the things, it sounds like it could be a little bit of a process even just to have someone private purchase it. What if part of that stipulation was they're willing to front, I'm just gonna throw it out there, okay? $300,000, like you said, what if a capital campaign was developed for, to, to do half of it? You front it, we build up $150,000. The people that have been using it, the Kiwanis Club, Altrusa, Women's Club, Garden Club, all those, if that was built in to, if we're able to do a capital campaign for half of it, the city doesn't have to deal with it, but we still have... uh, but we still have reasonable rates as nonprofit clubs to be able to use it. Because we're already faced with our clubs with not, I mean, we're, we're, we spent our money on community service, not on rental space. So to combine somehow an acquisition with an agreement to take care of the clubs who have already been renting it for many, many years.
Thank you, Ms. Griffin.
Altrusa's using it, um, twice a month. And.
It's used at least, it's used at least once a week by a, by an entity.
And Marilyn can answer the rentals for weddings and all the other stuff, 'cause she's managed that for many years.
Mr. Jennings, you had?
Uh, yes.
Every wall is solid mahogany under that plaster.
Thank you, Ms. Tim.
All the doors are solid mahogany.
Uh, uh, Mrs. Sparks, would you, uh, I just got a couple of questions for you, if you don't mind. Uh, one question is, can you, uh, I'm pretty sure the, the women's club would like to, uh, keep that name and, uh, the, the officers that's a part of that club, I'm pretty sure they would like to, uh, continue on doing what they're doing. Uh, you willing to, uh, to work with them? Uh, I don't know, uh, what name you're gonna have it, uh, would you change that? Uh, or would you continue to, uh, oversee, uh, the club along with, uh, the women's club? Uh, I think it'd be, uh, a very fair for, uh, if you would do something like this, that the, 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 the people who's in charge of the women's club now, their officers and, uh, they going out trying to get monies and donations and things like that. Um, uh, would you be willing to work with them, uh, on keeping the cl- club just like it is? And you, uh, pretty much, um, I guess oversee it, uh, or whatever the case may be?
So, um, yeah, I mean, we'd work with them for sure. If they're using it twice a month, I mean, we'd probably just work with them on how that would, I mean, we'd probably have to get a little bit more detailed on how that would all work out. Um, the building itself would be owned in a corporation, you know, whatever the name of the corporation would be. So the, the property owner would, you know, but as far as the building name itself, I mean, I guess we haven't really even gone down that road yet as far as what it would be, the building would be called. Um, but because it would be used as obviously other events as well, it would probably just have, I'm sure we'd probably could come together and agree on something, you know? But I, I, as far as the women's club, they would obviously, the organization that runs it now, they would just continue to run it themselves. We wouldn't have any involvement in that. We would just let them, they would just use it on the days that they use it, I think is the best way to do that, just to keep it separate.
So, so if they wanted to have like a, a wedding there or they wanted to have like bingo there that night or whatever, would you, uh, have a problem with them, uh, continue to go down the same path that they're on? Or would you add, uh, more, um, activity there?
Well, the, I, it would probably, because it would become an event space, they would, obviously if they had certain days blocked off that they already use it, then we would work with them on that. If they already are used to having it on certain days. So we would probably have to figure out what that is. I guess I haven't even talked to them about that scheduling, you know, we haven't got that far right now. We're just looking at the building itself, what the cost of repair would be. And, and then I think for me, it's the cost of the repair and then the ongoing repairs that, that are gonna come up that we don't even know about. Cause buildings like that, we, we, we remodeled a two-story building right over there, we're next to the Burger King. And that thing, it became a can of worms, you know, you pull back stuff and you find more stuff. So there's gonna be stuff that comes up that you don't even know about right now as you go to fix some of the roof system. But as far as the, the building itself, it would remain as it is, like it, it's essentially an event center now. And so it'd be, it would remain the same as it is now.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sparks. Mr. Carter?
Yeah, I was just, to kind of, I think, clarify a bit of a concept. There's like two things happening at the same time, which is the building is called the Women's Club. It's like the Women's Club Building. And then there is a club that is the Women's Club who uses the building. There's like four, I think, three or four other clubs that rent space in the building. So I, I may be wrong, which is, so feel free to correct me, but I don't think that the Women's Club is necessarily super interested in booking and the management of weddings and things like that. They, they're not trying to run it. They want, they, they need a space to meet, just like anybody else that's using it. So just like Kiwanis is using it, just like Altrusa and so on. So as far as, I mean, I would probably suggest, not that I think we're even close to that point, that the building probably remain the historic Women's Club in, in, in title. You know, probably in perpetuity, that's kind of the, the value of it, like the old, the old, you know, this forever, right?
Yeah.
But, um, but as far as, and then it's talking about the space and the rentals and deals and, most rental spaces from my experience have like nonprofit rates and things like that. So it may not be nothing, but I can imagine it being a lot, I would think. But again, that's just, that's, that would be, that would be the part where if we're, if we do hand it over to somebody else, to some degree, it would be up to them, you know? So, um, Mrs. Sparks seems like a nice fellow, so I, I can't imagine he'd be trying to, you know, run the Women's Club itself off from the place to meet at, obviously. Um, but no, I think the idea, the reason that this appeals to me, because I like the idea of a business operating to make money in town and do well and successful. And when a business operates and makes money and does well and is successful, you're able to maintain the building better. This is, this, all of this happening is a result of that, that building not being able to probably get real and meaningful maintenance for the last hundred years, you know? So, you know, if you, if you have a building that's making you money, you're gonna take care of it, I would think, so.
Ms. Young?
Yeah, I'm, um, may I ask your name again?
Yeah, it's Josh Sparks.
Josh Sparks.
Yeah.
Um, and I agree, you seem to be a very, um, nice businessman.
Yeah, thank you.
And we're sitting here kind of building, um, your business on this building which you've asked to own. Um, what I don't like is that it's like we're putting these stipulations here and you're one man, but this is a corporation, is that right? And I don't want us to get the wrong impression or to get hung up on this is what we asked for. And, and at the end, it becomes distasteful because we have this expectation of all these things we've asked for, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
And you're kind of shaking your head, yes. Um, so what I'm asking is that you kind of take all of this and of course, just tell us you'll, you'll, you'll think about it, you'll consider it.
Yeah.
You know, cause you're shaking your head, yes, and then of course, we'll feel like, and I'm gonna say we as a whole, we'll feel like we're gonna get these things. And then the business kind of goes sour at the end. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
I appreciate, um, your willingness to, um, even consider. And, um, because we do want it to be very tasteful at the end, I would love to see the building saved. And that was the question I was asking, thank you, uh, Ms. Harris, about how, how the Women's Club, these ladies who put all their time, um, and whole heart into this, this, this building and this business, this operation. And I wanted to know how they felt. That's why I asked, um, is it the building that you would like to see saved? Or is it the, you want it saved and continue your Women's Club, you know, Women's Club duties, um, there? So, um, and I hope you get what I'm saying.
Yeah, I do.
Yeah, so, um, let us, let us all be grateful, first of all. We, we've had a lot of time in there. We've been blessed to have the building for this long. And for somebody to stand here and offer to put their finances, their time, effort into this building, so it'll remain there for the city of Lake City, I do think that's a great thing and I salute you for that. Um, but, but let's just consider.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, so I would say I've invested in the town. I have a business in the town. So to me, you know, just any building that gets restored downtown, to me, it's just, you know, it's, it's a fun thing to see. Cause so, so I feel like I'm invested in the city. Um, sure, it's great to make money, but at the same time, I want, I don't want to see the building get torn down myself. I've, you know, I've had people come up to me and say the same thing. And so that's partially why, you know, started thinking about it, 'cause I've heard a lot of people talking about how they want to save it. So it's partially, sure, you want to make money, but at the same time, it's like, I, I would like to be involved in restoring the building and I've got the experience doing it, because we did it for the other building downtown. That's still standing and doing great, so.
Ms. Harris?
I think that we collectively have, um, come to the conclusion that we just want the building to be preserved. And I feel like it's a win-win position, whereas if Mrs. Sparks is going to take on this task, and I just cannot say I'm in on the telling him what to do with the building after putting so many thousands of dollars into the building, 'cause after all, we just want to preserve the building. So I wouldn't, I would hope that you would make the prices reasonable. But that isn't my twenty, however much thousands of dollars it would cost to get it up and going.
Well, yeah, you gotta look at the cost of, I, we would have to look at the cost of what we put into it initially and then what the maintains, maintenance costs. You got the insurance, the taxes, all that. You have to look at all of that and then come up with, of course, reasonable rates. I mean, if it's, if someone's getting it for free right now, obviously we can't continue just to let them use it for free, 'cause there's just a monthly cost just to maintain the building. So yes, you're correct.
But, yeah, please, Ms. Rosenthal.
I, I would just like to point out, it seems to be that you're considering giving it to this, this young man here. If that's the case, I would like to suggest with some, uh, counsel with legal, that if you give it to him, that you do it, uh, tentatively, uh, to him, so he can immediately start to work on the building, because the building's in the process of dying right now. And the longer we take to make the process happen, the worse off the building's gonna be.
Yeah, I think, I think that we have a, um, immediate need, I have a concern, however. And, and I know Mr. Sparks, um, he, he does beautiful work. Um, my concern is the, the process with which we get rid of an asset, remove an asset from our books. And it needs to be fair, uh, it needs to go through the process of fairness. Um, I actually think a better route for us as a city, and this is why I asked about the reverter, would be to give the building back to the Women's Club and let them make that decision, because they have a ninety-nine year lease on it. Uh, and they could make that decision a lot quicker, a lot cleaner and without, without our bureaucracy. Does that make sense to everybody?
To, Mr. Mayor, your, the suggestion would be that if a route like Mr. Sparks has suggested is what is taken, it's simpler if we were to give the Women's Club the building and then make that decision without having laws and ordinances and so on.
Revert, yeah, we would revert our, our, um, but there's no reverter clause, but I don't know how we would go about that with the deed. I do think, I think that it would be, because we have other properties.
Yeah.
Right? Um, and what this, this opens a can of worms of folks coming to us for all of our properties and saying, if you're gonna give it, if you're gonna give a building to somebody, then the, there needs to be a fair process for all of your buildings to be given to somebody if you're not using them. And that's not what the door we want to open. Um, I think that for expediency too, it makes a quicker, cleaner path to give it back to the private nonprofit uh, and let them make the decision on that. Um, and they're, they have a historic stake in it. So then the negotiation be, comes between and it really, we're, we've been asking a lot of questions with concern to their history and their stake of the building, uh, that they can address in that, that process of giving that building to somebody. Does that make sense?
Makes a lot of sense.
A lot of sense.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Carter?
Only thing, and, and obviously this is a different scenario, but I have talked to several members of the Women's Club over the last six months or so. And my very first reaction was that, would you like it back, you know? And, and I've been, I've been told, no, because it's got this giant price tag to fix.
Right.
So this is a different scenario, but obviously I think we would need to probably, that, that then goes back to, if it's even something to consider, the Women's Club and its board would probably have to have their own discussion and come back and chat with us too.
Mr. Martin, your thoughts?
Um. I think that obviously no- nothing is going to happen tonight. Uh, if I got the sense from council that you wanted me to move forward with drafting and ordinance that laid out one or maybe two alternate pathways for how we dispose of excess or surplus real property, I can begin working on that, uh, with an eye toward a couple of scenarios, depending on what the discussions are of, you know, the stakeholders involved in this conversation. You know, with an eye toward late August, early September, maybe there being a disposition if there's a consensus. Uh, because we're looking at two, two readings of an ordinance to begin with. So I mean, the earliest I could bring something back would be the second meeting in July. And then, uh, you know, from there, we'd have a second reading at the beginning of August and, you know, that, that's rushing things and making sure that there's a consensus on what you adopt. And then based on whatever's adopted, it, it may take a, an extra meeting after that to actually give effect to it, depending on the pathway chosen by council and stakeholders. So, you know, that, that I think is probably your earliest possible date for a total disposition of things would be late August, by the time you went through, you know, two readings adopting an ordinance, uh, and then, uh, giving a disposition. If, uh, there was an overall consensus in the meantime that, uh, you wanted to explore a complete reverter, then we could enter into a, a conversation with the Women's Club about amending their lease to add a reversionary clause and what the criteria would be to trigger that. Again, you know, that would come back before this board at the earliest at your second meeting in July and, uh, to adopt that amendment to the lease. And then you're still looking at early to late August, depending on, you know, what hoops and triggers have to be, uh, you know, negotiated based on that lease amendment. So you're still looking at sometime in August to being able to have a final disposition on it, so.
There isn't another way around for it taking so long, because I actually went into the building with, with, um, Scott. And you're, you're saying in August or September, I would hate for us to get in a position whereas we are waiting on, um, for us to vote on it and then the, it crushes, crashes down, then he's not gonna want it, then the bill is gonna be on us and the women's club, they're not gonna get what they want. So it'd be like a lose-lose thing. So I'm wondering, is there any way around us, um, having to take all that time? You, you know what I mean?
It, it depends ultimately on the consensus of the parties, but I, I do think you're looking at, I mean, you've got two meetings beyond this one. So I mean, e- early August would be the probably earliest that you'd possibly be able to, if there was a consensus with all of the stakeholders involved on how to proceed. And, and that process would probably be one where you were actually pursuing a, a reversionary pathway to revert it back to the, the Women's Club. If they say we don't want to go that route, then it's gonna take a, at least a meeting longer than early August to be able to adopt a, an ordinance to guide you through a, a surplusing of the property.
So pretty much there is no other route. The earliest will be in August or September. Either route that we take, there isn't nothing we can do that could speed this forward.
Well, I mean, the, the, the council could, uh, agree to do special meetings. I mean, that, you know, special meetings could make it go faster, but if you're keeping with your normal meeting schedule, it, it's gonna take at least, unless there's some kind of consensus, 'cause you can't vote on it within a, a workshop. So I'm, I'm kind of listening for consensus, so I have some kind of idea of something maybe I can bring back at your next meeting. Uh, so, but you've got at least one meeting to, to vote on a pathway and then at least a second meeting to actually, you know, give effect to what that pathway is.
Vice Mayor Young?
And that's pretty much exactly what I was, um, thinking as far as the process. Um, we do know that it's hurricane season. And, um, things are happening without it being a bad structure. Um, so it's, this is very serious and time is not on our side. So, and Mayor, with what you were saying, um, to do things where others wouldn't believe, wouldn't get the impression that we can just give them property, well, I think this is a special circumstance. Um, because the Women's Club are, really, they're kind of semi-owners, if you ask me. So I'm, I'm wondering if there's a quicker way to just deed them the property. Because even with that, deeding them the property and then them making the decision to deed it to this businessman, who I can't remember his name.
Mr. Sparks.
So there's still time in there. And where are we gonna get caught, even if we deed it to the, um, Women's, the, the Women's Club, even we deed it to them and something happened right after we deed it to them, we're still in a bad, um, space with it.
That's right.
So whatever we can do as expeditiously as possible.
Yeah.
It, with, in an emergency basis, is there any way to waive part of that process based on?
I, I think you're looking at two meetings minimum.
And we can always do a special meeting. Mr. Rosenthal's been waiting, yes, sir.
So, uh, we have to follow what the legal requirements are. But we could hold a series of special meetings and that would help us move very fast on it.
Okay. Mr. Carter?
I was just gonna say that I for one certainly don't mind scheduling some special meetings would come in here. Most of those, in those cases would be probably very short, simple, make a decision meetings. Um, so we could certainly add a couple of special meetings and I'm, I'm for one, okay with that.
I think we're on a, a good consensus. Let me ask a question of the Women's Club. Yes, Mr. Jenigan?
Yes, you, you say, uh, we all on, on board with that. I'm not on board with that.
Oh, I didn't say that. I said, I'm okay with it and he said it felt like we had a, something of a consensus.
Whoever said it, uh, uh, these special meetings, uh, uh, to try to rush this process, uh, I, I don't think I'm okay with that. Uh, we, we have to look at it from the, uh, legal, uh, side. Uh, and he's trying to tell us in so many words that, uh, let's do it the right way, uh, without cutting in, any corners. So that's what he's trying to tell you in a nice way, but he goes on to these long spills and it just confuses me big time.
In one of his spills, he said special meetings could expedite the process.
Yeah, he did say that. However, he, if he wanted to have a special meeting, he would've said that in the beginning. It was suggested and, uh, to have those special meetings. But, uh, uh, having special meetings just, uh, for this purpose, and, uh, uh, I don't think that it's necessary. So I'm just letting you know, uh, Mayor, that I'm not on board with having special meeting after special meetings. But I am in, in agreeance with, uh, giving the, uh, the deed, uh, the right way to the, uh, to the Women's Club and letting them make the decision.
The urgency is, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Go for it.
The urgency is because of the building's structure itself. We're, we're, we're not just wanting to rush this through as if we're doing somebody some great big favor. The biggest thing is we wanna preserve the building. And in order to preserve the buil, building is to go ahead and do what we need to do so he could start working on it. Because if it crashes, God forbid, be, before that happens, nobody wins. Everybody will lose. So if, if, whatever we need to do, I mean, we just really need a quorum to vote, right? So if, if, if a couple of us are planning on being here, we just be here and vote on it and so the, um, this train can keep on growing.
I have a, I have a quick question for the Women's Club. Would you guys be able to, would you guys accept the property if we deeded it back to you?
I'm one person, I'm not the whole club.
The whole club, so you guys, we would have to have that acceptance anyways. Um, when do you guys meet?
We meet in the fall.
In the fall.
We meet October, so we might, where, where are we meeting?
We're, uh, meeting over by Jack's Liquors.
For, for, for business though, could you guys have a, could you guys have a board meeting prior to then?
Some people let us meet and we met the last time, uh, a couple of months ago.
Well, we would have to, we would have to have you guys as a willing partner to accept it. Would you guys be able to have an emergency meeting between now and then?
I can't speak for the whole group, I can't speak for me. There's the Women's Club and there's the Garden Club. You have the lease with the, with the Women's Club.
Yes.
And we have an agreement with the Garden Cl, with the Women's Club to share that building. And you can pay everything, we have put so much money in it.
We would have to give it, I, we would have to give it to the Women's Club though, is the, is the thing. So we would need, we'd probably need you guys to come up and figure out if you guys could meet and we could convey that to you or not. Otherwise, we gotta go down a different path. Yes, ma'am?
We've been without a building since May was a year ago. And then we had to page the community to find a place to meet.
Yes, Ms.
All our stuff is still in the building.
Vice Mayor Young?
Women are of the Garden Club.
They're of the Women and the Garden Club.
Women and the Garden Club. Okay. I, I will say, I believe, wholeheartedly, that if this club knew that there's a possib, great possibility that this building is gonna remain, I believe their flood is placed.
Yeah, me too.
Because I, when I walked in here, really my heart dropped. And what I thought to myself was, Lord have mercy, they're so heartbroken. They just know they're gonna get bad news, that's why they didn't show up. So, and I'm always coming to tears, but, um, I believe if we asked them to have a meeting or come attend a meeting so that we can make this decision with them, I believe it would happen. So.
I can't speak for them either, but I can imagine we're not doing that.
Yeah, we would have to have, we would need them to make an official action to accept a deed at least. Um, and then they could convey, they would probably have to in that same meeting have some urgency to, to make a move on, on how to convey that. It's not necessarily where they're meeting or having a general meeting, it's just having a board meeting, business decision, accept the deed, convey the deed so that the building can be repaired.
And who can let know, I can take care of that, I send out.
Mr. Rosenthal? Alright. Um, does anybody have any other thoughts?
I, I would just like to say, um, w- w- we're doing everything that we can to have that building preserved, but us as being the council and the mayor, we still gonna have to have y- you guys to do your part. And I mean that by saying, we're willing to come out here to make special meetings so we can move this along quicker. So I, I, I just wanna say, um, you, you, you guys gonna have to do your part. You're gonna have to reach out, make those phone calls and say, you need to show up or either tell us what your vote is. Do you want us to go ahead and try to get?
We'll have an answer tomorrow.
Sounds good to me.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. Alright, so, so I believe that we've come to the consensus to work toward conveying that deed back to the Women's Club so that they can do expeditiously what they need to do to preserve that building. Sound good? Mr. Sparks? Thank you for bringing that option to both us and, uh, all parties involved. We appreciate you. Does anybody have anything else? I'll adjourn this special meeting before our regularly scheduled six P M.